Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting of council, which is for the adoption of the twenty five twenty six budget for Toowoomba Regional Council. Welcome to all of those who are joining us online and those that are in the room with us. Thank you very much, noting a very strong financial services representation in the room today. So thank you very much for being with us today. I know this is an important occasion, an important meeting for for all across our council and for the community, and particularly for the hard work that financial services have put in since October last year, at the very least. So, as I've said, this meeting is open to the public, and I thank you to councillors for your presence. And I'll say a little bit more about our our involvement to get to this point as we get closer through the end of of the meeting. But from the outset, wanted to particularly thank all councillors for the way in which we've got to this point today. This has been a massive effort, and one that has needed a fair bit of soul searching, I would say, and and therefore, we do that on behalf of our community with the best interests of every individual across our thirteen thousand square kilometres. Can I begin by acknowledging the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, the Gible and the Jarroa peoples, and the Biggable peoples, and pay respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, rich traditions, and bold ambitions of Australia's first people? We move to item two, which is the attendance, including apologies, leave of absence, granting leaves of absence, and declarations of conflict of interest. Apologies, we don't have any. However, we do have a leave of absence to note. There's no resolution required. That's for councillor Bill Carl. Would anyone like to seek any leave of absence for any subsequent meetings that we didn't do yesterday? If there is nothing further there, conflicts of interest, this is a budget meeting, and therefore, there should not be a conflict of interest. Item number three, then councillors, is the adoption of the twenty five twenty six operational plan. And very pleased today to welcome Christine Wilkins. Christine, welcome to you, and thank you and and your team for getting us to this point. I'll hand over to you to introduce the operational plan for twenty five twenty six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, councillors. Today's report seeks council's consideration and adoption of the proposed operational plan for the twenty five twenty six financial year, as detailed in attachment one. The coming financial year marks the second year of implementing our twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine corporate plan. In accordance with legislative requirements, council must adopt an operational plan each financial year to demonstrate how the goals and key priorities of the corporate plan will be achieved. The twenty five twenty six operational plan continues to follow the revised structure of the corporate plan, presenting specific actions and projects aligning to the corporate goals rather than the organisational structure, as was previously the case. Feedback on this new format has been overwhelmingly positive, highlighting that the operational plan is clearer, more concise, and more accessible for the community, which is essential for a document of this nature. Development of this plan began in January with an initial information session held with councillors on the nineteenth of February to discuss priorities and areas of focus for the coming year. From there, we worked closely with general managers and held workshops with managers and staff across council to prepare the draft. Once the draft was endorsed by the executive leadership team, we provided further updates and held additional councillor information sessions on the first of April and the thirteenth of May. Councillor feedback and suggestions from these sessions were then incorporated into the final version of the plan. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone involved in developing the twenty five twenty six operational plan. It's been a pleasure working with all involved, and it's been genuinely impressive to see the level of passion and commitment shown across the organisation to ensure council success in the coming year. I'd also like to remind councillors that this operational plan can, of course, be amended at any time during the year by resolution, providing the flexibility to adapt to emerging challenges and opportunities as they arise. I now present the twenty five twenty six operational plan for your consideration with the recommendation that council adopt the plan as presented in attachment one. I welcome any comments or questions through you, Mr. Mayor.
Christine, thank you very much indeed for that. Do appreciate it, and again, endorse your words right across the organisation, certainly with councillors. We do appreciate that. Councillors, any questions? The motion before us, then, is that the proposed twenty five twenty six operational plan, attachment one, be adopted. Perhaps someone moved by councillor Abeka, seconded by councillor Tim. Any need to go into debate? If not, I put the motion. Those in favour, motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, and again, thank you, Christine. Thank you, David, as well. Do appreciate it very much indeed. Councillors, we move to item number four, which is the closing of the meeting to the public. However, this is done simply as a as a way of making sure that our budget is approved today in an open session. And so therefore, the motion, in fact, will be that item number five, which is listed as confidential, the adoption of the Toowoomba Regional Council budget and revenue statement for twenty twenty five twenty six financial year, be discussed in an open meeting. The motion is to go to open. Moved by councillor Trevor, seconded by councillor Melissa. Those in favour, that motion's carried. Thank you. We then move to the open session, which is the budget, and it's the adoption of the twenty five twenty six budget, which includes the revenue statement for the financial year. And prior to moving to the eighteen motions, and we'll try and share these around if we can, eighteen motions, I'd like to just open with some some words, if I could, in regard to the budget. And and it is as follows, and this will be, in fact, recorded and and put in hard copy into the minutes as well for reference, future reference. So I will try and read word for word, but those who know me well enough understand that it may not be exactly word for word. Well, there we go. So my fellow councillors, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to table the Toowoomba Regional Council's twenty five twenty six budget and operational plan. Today's budget adoption demonstrates belief in our region, belief in our community, belief in each other as your elected representatives, as councillors, and belief in the council workforce. Like you, we love where we live. We love the Toowoomba region. This is why we'll continue to work with our teams to ensure we're delivering essential services and maintaining that livability, the very reasons why we choose to live, learn, work, and play where we do. This term, councillors have been committed to doing things differently for better. And with that in mind, there's much to look forward to in this year's budget. It's about strengthening our foundations with a clear focus on careful financial management, delivering essential services to our growing communities, and maintaining existing infrastructure. This is a large seven hundred and five million dollar financial plan, which will allow council to maintain and upgrade existing facilities and provide essential services while planning for a brighter future for current and successive generations. And with that in mind, today's budget is about council strengthening our foundations, with a few new projects and plenty of essential and mandatory upgrades of existing infrastructure to support our growing communities. More than ever before, councils across Australia are being asked to deliver more services with less funding. The cost shifting has occurred towards local governments for the past twenty years, and according to the Local Government Association of Queensland's research, we see have seen a three hundred and seventy eight percent increase of cost shifting during that time. That's over twenty years. Just think about that for a moment. A three hundred and seventy eight percent increase of costs going to local government. No level of government provides so many immediate critical services that your as your local council. That's why Toowoomba Regional Council joined the Local Government Association of Queensland's campaign earlier this year, calling for an increase in untied funding for all councils to at least one percent of Commonwealth tax revenue, at least one percent. For us here in the Toowoomba region, it is a genuine lived experience of funding having decreased over time. The huge reduction in financial assistance grants, or FA grants, we've received has had a significant impact on our ability to keep our budgets in surplus. FA grants are used to take the pressure off ratepayers, to fund our business-as-usual activities, just like a household wage might be, to help pay for fuel, electricity, rent, or mortgage repayments. To put that into perspective, in the year of twenty one twenty two, financial year, Toowoomba Regional Council received over nineteen million dollars in financial assistance grants, over nineteen million dollars. This amount we received this year was just five and a half million dollars. That's a thirteen and a half million dollar increase in decrease during that time, thirteen and a half million dollar decrease in that time. Despite that, councillors and the executive leadership team have worked hard to deliver today a budget with an operating surplus of a moderate one point five million dollars. That's an important point to make. This is a forecast, a forecast one point five million dollar surplus. Today, we are handing down in the budget. In this budget, councillors delivered a general rate rise for Toowoomba urban residential ratepayers, which is the measure we we work off as a standard across the region, of nine point five percent, a nine point five percent residential rate payers for Toowoomba urban general rate rise. That equates to, across all of our region, sixty eight percent of our ratable properties will receive a general rate rise of less than ten percent. Sixty eight percent of our ratable properties, less than ten percent. The average Toowoomba urban residential ratepayer will have an increase of around two hundred and forty one dollars a year, or four dollars sixty a week on their general rates, with discounts factored in. Keeping in mind, changes vary depending on individual circumstances. It is important to note, this considered rate increase is on the basis of a strong commitment from this chamber to look at the ways we do business and the services we deliver to the community. It's a strong commitment from this council that over the next twelve months, we have factored in a fourteen point seven five million dollar saving in materials, services, and operational expenditure in the adoption of today's budget. I'll just pause on that for a moment to reflect on that. Over the next twelve months, this council is committed to doing what we can to see savings of fourteen point seven five million dollars. And councillors are committed to doing that with our team and with the community. Increase to the cost of living is having significant impacts on our operations with council, continuing to shoulder many cost increases on behalf of our ratepayers. This year, we've budgeted fourteen point four million dollars for for electricity alone. That's fourteen million dollars just to keep essential services running and the lights on. That's an increase of some fifteen and a half percent from this year. Think about this in your own circumstances. A fifteen and a half percent increase in electricity alone. The story doesn't get any better for council's insurance premiums, and despite not changing our level of coverage, so for the same coverage we receive this year, it's costing council five million dollars to pay our premiums this year, which is a two point one million dollar increase, so going up from three point nine to five million dollars, which is a seventy three percent increase in insurance. Seventy three percent increase in insurance premiums, year on year. So I'd encourage all of us to have a look at your own premium and see what that is. The volatility in fuel prices will also be felt, with a whopping five point seven million dollars forecast in fuel alone to keep council's fleet on the road. Recent media would suggest that that'll be underdone. And I'd suggest to you, by BR one, we may well have a different number. Such is the volatility of the fuel price and what we see in the wind that follows us for the next six months. Just like households, these are unavoidable expenses for council, and that they keep rising well beyond inflation each year. This year, we continue to be burdened with the Queensland state government's waste levy bin tax. This levy covers thirty nine of council's seventy seven local governed areas. Essentially, essentially, this, the state government is now taxing us for the amount of waste which ends up in our landfills. We've budgeted nine million dollars to cover the full cost of this levy. However, there's a gap of four point two million dollars to be funded from general rates and commercial gate fees after the state government's annual waste levy payment. This is another prime example of costs increasing, which impact our bottom line and impact everyone in our region. Despite these hurdles, there's plenty to be positive and thankful for. Today's budget draws on the combined talents of council's financial services team in collaboration with all operation areas across council. I thank my colleagues for their input in developing this budget, which will see council continue to deliver essential services for our growing community. The budget reflects the priorities outlined in council's operational plan, which has just been endorsed and adopted, and the corporate plan. Our seven hundred and five million dollar operational capital works programme, once again, delivers projects and services to support our growing communities across the Toowoomba region. Council will spend two hundred and thirty six million dollars in this budget on capital projects, projects like continuing the rollout of smart water meters, upgrading formed and unformed lower order roads, renewing playground equipment in the parks of our regional towns, and essential water mains and sewer upgrades, all included in this year's budget. We're spending four hundred and sixty nine million dollars on our core council operations in delivering those essential services to our residents, ensuring waste is collected, parks and gardens are maintained, libraries and recreation facilities remain open, and that clean and safe drinking water flows from the taps right across the region. Council's obligation to maintain our existing infrastructure and our ability to maintain our seven point one billion dollar asset base across thirteen thousand square kilometres is a key performance indicator by which we are evaluated by the Queensland Treasury Corporation. Despite many external demands, council continues to work in accordance with our long-term financial sustainability measures to ensure we budget for essential capital works and services that support our communities for the coming year and into the future. Council's overall operation and capital expenditure parameters are based on our ten-year long-term financial forecast, which is adopted by council, will be adopted today as well, and is overseen by the Department of Local Government, Queensland Treasury, and the Queensland Audit Office. In the coming year, the major areas of operational capital expenditure include, this is operational capital together, two hundred and sixty three million dollars for water and wastewater projects, which does include Crestbrook Dam Safety Improvement Project, in part thereof, one hundred and sixty million dollars for roads, drainage, footpaths, and bikeways, one hundred and twenty two million dollars for community services, facilities, parks, and recreation projects, fifty million dollars for waste services, seventeen and a half million dollars for disaster recovery funding arrangements. We will continue to advocate for our fair share of funding to achieve our community goals and ambitions. This includes continued advocacy to assist council to deliver the Crestbrook Dam Safety Improvement Project. We have budgeted a further ninety six million dollars for works on this mandatory project this year, in twenty five twenty six. In fact, our water security continues to be a high priority for council, and this year, we will enter the second year of a five-year price path for water infrastructure and water usage. To put that into perspective, we operate some eight water treatment plants, seven wastewater treatment plants, more than two thousand kilometres of water mains, almost fourteen hundred kilometres of wastewater mains, and three dams, that all require continued maintenance and renewal to keep taps on and sewerage moving. The water infrastructure charge for an average property will increase by eighty three dollars thirty for the year, or one dollar sixty per week, with changes to the early payment discounts also factored in. We've also budgeted seven point two million dollars for the Southern Water Treatment Plant, which, once complete, will service the four communities of Greenmount, Clifton, Nobie, and Cambuya. The project will be vital for the growth and sustainability of these rural areas. In our region, our council is committed to working with our local suppliers. We proudly promote our procurement policy, which continues to pay dividends. And if there's one example of a strategic decision being undertaken and followed by the operation alarm over the last decade in this council, this is a perfect example of it. In the current financial year to May twenty twenty five, we reported yesterday that council spent one hundred and seventy one million dollars with local suppliers. This puts us just shy of sixty percent target of our total expenditure year to date, with additional payments to be made in June. We're often asked what we do for business in our community. That is a clear example of what we can do for business, which is to support local business. In delivering today's budget, I particularly wish to thank all of my council colleagues, including councillor Carl, as an apology today, all of my council colleagues. For us, this is a team effort. It is definitely a team effort. It started well before October even last year, and for the excitement of all of us in the room, it'll commence the twenty six twenty seven budget in about a month's time, because we know we've got work to do. We know there'll be changes that need to be made, and we're committed to do it. We're committed because we have a belief in our community. I'd like to also acknowledge former interim CEO Colin Jensen, a current acting CEO Nick Howser, and all the executive leadership team. Particular tribute is paid to general manager of corporate services Anne Marie. Thank you very, Anne Marie, very much. It's been a trying time for you the last few months, and and we certainly stand with you, and thank you for all your work very much indeed, Anne Marie. In saying that, the financial services team I mentioned at the start of the meeting today, I'd like to particularly well thank all of you, not only for being here today, but for working in step with council over the last six months. To Andrew Wagner, manager of financial services, thank you, Andrew, Shane Morris, who I'm hopeful we were watching online, our principal rates and revenue officer, to Emily Kimmins, who I know is watching online, Emily, principal management accountant, and to Mary Lou Currie, thank you, Mary Lou, who's the principal corporate accountant and focuses on the long-term financial sustainability measures for council. But to all of your teams, thank you very much, and to all of council's teams right across, we do appreciate the work, and we know that the work we've got ahead of us will be done better if we do it together, and that's what we'll do. Your assistance is greatly appreciated. As I said a couple of times, this budget is about council strengthening our foundations and working hand in glove with our community to chart a path forward and an even brighter future for the Toowoomba region. We'll now move to the eighteen motions. The first motion, councillors, is the adoption of the revenue statement for the twenty five twenty six financial year. We'll get that motion put up on the screen so we know exactly what we're voting on. Our councillors, with your indulgence, I don't propose to read out all these motions, and for obvious reasons, particularly when we get to motion number two. However, not only are they on screen, they're also online, and will be available for the public viewing as well, as this is now in an open session. The motion, however, for this first one is the adoption of budget and revenue statement for the twenty five twenty six financial year. It's outlined in all parts there for you. I now lock I'd now like to call for a motion that adoption of budget and revenue statement for '25, '26 financial year is moved. Moved by councillor Rebecca, seconded by councillor Tim. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. We then move to the second, which is differential general rates, '25, '26. And councillors, you'll understand why I'm not reading out this because there's... My quickest summation here is about 20 pages. At least 15. However, the motion is that council adopt the different categories that are identified in this motion and that we adopt them as per the agenda. If someone move. Moved by councillor Edwina, seconded by councillor James. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Our third motion is for separate charges. Separate charges. Let's shift all those pages. There we go. Separate charges, councillors, and this particularly refers to the public transport levy. And that you'll see some media come out in regard to this, if you have been... Pardon me. You have seen some media already and you'll see more come out about this. A really positive outlook in regard to what these charges will go to over the next few years. And certainly, in fact, yesterday's meeting, we in fact adopted a pathway and clear vision for what that can be. So councillors, this motion is the public transport levy. So I'll call for someone to move. Moved by councillor Melissa, seconded by councillor Trevor. Those in favour? Motion's carried. The second special charges is in regard to the rural fire levy, the library-related activities levy, the gates and grids permit renewal levy. That's it. That's the three. And so therefore, councillors, for those special charges, a call for... Moved by councillor Carol Taylor. Have a seconder. Seconded by councillor Kerry Shine. Those in favour? Motion's carried. We then move to item number five or motion number five, which is trade waste utility charges. Trade waste utility charges, of which there's A, B, right down to C, and it continues on actually. So councillors, again, trade waste utility charges all are available there for viewing, both online and in hard copy. Going to have someone move. Trade waste utility charges '25, '26 are adopted. Thank you councillor Melissa. Seconder, councillor Edwina. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Item number six or motion number six is the sewerage utility charges. Again, there's quite a number of items in there. All for your reading interest. Sewer utility charges, a motion that we adopt, the sewer utility charges for '25, '26. Moved by councillor Rebecca, seconded by councillor Gardner. Those in favour? Motion's carried. We then move to item number seven. Now councillor Melissa, I'm going to hand over to you for item number seven because I note that you have an adjustment, or not an adjustment, an addition in fact to the motion. So I'll hand over to you in the first instance. We'll then get a second for that motion, keeping in mind that the first one I'm not expecting you at all to read out. Okay? Thank you councillor.
Very grateful for that, Mr Mayor. Thank you. This morning, I would like to move the waste management utility charges motion for '25, '26. But in doing so, I would like to add a second point to that motion. So motion 7.2, that council through its '25, '26 fees and charges schedule, investigate and implement a fee structure that provides a financial incentive for residents who choose to upsize their yellow lid recycling bin to a 360 litre and downsize their red lid general waste bin to 120 litre.
Yeah, so I might just get a seconder if I can. Seconded by councillor Rebecca. Happy for you to elaborate on that second part if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The bin tax is a landfill levy imposed by the Queensland Government. For every tonne of waste our community sends to landfill, council is hit with a significant charge. Council estimates it will pay $9 million in this waste levy or bin tax. And this is paid to the Queensland Government during the '25, '26 financial year. Of the $9 million, 4.8 million will be funded through subsidies. But ultimately, the cost to council will be $4.2 million. And this is to be covered through both general rates and commercial gate fees. If we as a community don't reduce the amount of waste going to landfill, this cost will continue to rise and it will be our community that bears this financial burden. Council must act now. We need to make real, practical changes that support recycling and reduce landfill. If we fail to do so, the escalating cost of the state government's landfill levy will become an unsustainable impost on our region. Encouraging residents to recycle more and waste less is not just an environmental responsibility, it's an economic necessity. That's why I'm putting forward a motion for council to consider changes to our fees and charges structure that reward households for choosing a bigger recycling bin and a smaller general waste bin. It's a simple step that can make a real difference both for our community and our bottom line. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Melissa. Yeah, beautifully said. So we've got a move of councillor Melissa, seconded by councillor Rebecca. Anyone need to go to debate? Those in favour? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. We move now to item number eight, which is water utility charges. Water utility charges, I did touch on that briefly in my commentary at the start and don't propose to read through those pages. Therefore, councillors, the water utility charges, a call for a motion that we adopt the water utility charges for '25, '26. Moved by councillor Rebecca, seconded by councillor Kerry. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Okay, we move then to item number nine. Motion number nine. Motion number nine is the discount and the discount is listed as a discount. And this is important. I did mention it in my opening remarks, a bit more than just opening remarks. The council adopt the following pursuant to section 130 of Local Government Act, rates and charges, clause six, for differential general rate, sewer utility charges and water infrastructure charges only for land described in differential general rating categories of 1.1 to 2.3 inclusive shall be subject to a 5% discount provided that a) all of the aforementioned rates and charges are paid within 33 days after the date of issue of the rate notice; b) all other rates and charges appearing on the rates notice that are not subject to the 5% discount are paid within 33 days after the date of issue of the rate notice; and c) all other overdue rates and charges relating to the ratable assessment are paid within 33 days after the date of issue of the rate notice. That's the motion before us, councillors. Have someone move. Moved by... This is for the discount. The adoption of... I read the whole thing out. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Kerry. Those in favour? Motion's carried. We move then to number 10, which is the interest. The interest for number 10, pursuant to section 133 of Local Government Act Regulation 2012, simple interest will be charged on all overdue rates and charges as that term is defined in Local Government Regulation 2016-6 Monthly Ares, i.e. from the end of the previous half year in which same became due and payable at the rate of 8.5% per annum, calculated and charged half yearly generally at the end of December and June. The motion is that we adopt that information in regard to interest. Moved by councillor... Question, councillor Trevor?
Just probably to Anne-Marie. How is the 8.5% per annum worked out? So how was the 8.5% per annum calculated?
It's calculated on the overdue rate. Some are calculated twice a year and the amount that is outstanding.
But how do you come to that 8.5 compared to whatever is going?
The state... Yeah, the state government sets a maximum amount. So the 8.5 is below the maximum that is set by the state.
Thanks for that clarity.
Thanks. Happy to move. Moved by councillor Trevor. Seconded by councillor Melissa. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Right. Thank you. We then move to levy and payments. I won't read all of these out. The levy and payments there for online and in hard copy. That we adopt the levy and payments for '25, '26. Have someone move. Moved by councillor Edwina, seconded by councillor Tim. Those in favour? Okay, item number 12, rates and concessions. Rates and concessions. So this is in two parts and the first one and second one. So let's read those out. There's only two small ones there. A general rate pensioner concession for the entire region, this is A, 12A. Pursuant to sections 120, 121 and 122 of Local Government Regulation 2012, a rebate of the general rate of $120 per annum will be granted to all ratepayers who are pensioners and who are eligible for the state government pensioner rate subsidy. Just for a matter of interest, that equates to around about 11,000, close to... 11,000 properties, I should say. And B, water infrastructure charge pensioner concession, entire region. Pursuant to sections 120, 121, 122 of Local Government Regulation 2012, a rebate of the water infrastructure charge of $70 per annum be granted to all ratepayers who are pensioners, who are eligible for the state government pensioner rate subsidy and who have access to any Toowoomba Regional Council water supply. I can have someone move the adoption of 12A and B. Moved by councillor Tim, seconded by councillor Kerry. Those in favour? Motion's carried. We move to item number 13. Item 13 is the total value in rates and utility charges. You can see that the pursuant to section 169.7 of Local Government Regulation, the total value of the change expressed as a percentage in the rates and utilities charge budgeted to be levied for '25, '26 financial year compared with the rates and utilities budgeted to be levied at '24, '25 financial year is 10.17%. For the purpose of calculation, any discounts and rebates are excluded in that. So that's the total value in change in rates and utility charges. Have someone move. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Gary. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Trying to share these around incidentally, so still will need notification. Item number 14, sentiment of estimated financial position. That pursuant to section 205 of Local Government Regulation 2012, council receive and note the estimated statement of financial operations and financial position of the council in respect to the '24, '25 financial year, including the budgeted financial statements. Financial operation. Should that be the right... Is that the right year that... Anne-Marie? I don't think it is. So we're actually from the last financial year.
And we are required to adopt estimated statements. So these are the same statements, the same figures that we looked at at the ordinary meeting yesterday with the surplus that... with the deficit that was discussed.
Which will be the end of... When you go to the end of the... Yeah.
So we're estimating that this will be our 30th of June 2025 result. And then all our financial modelling starts from one July with those figures carried forward.
Thank you very much. So I've read the motion. Have someone move. Moved by councillor Edwina, seconded by councillor Tim. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Move to item number 15, which is the debt policy. That council adopt pursuant to section 192 of Local Government, the debt policy attachment eight. Have someone move, debt policy. Councillor Rebecca, seconded. Councillor Melissa, those in favour? Those in favour? Motion's carried. Okay. Number 16, procurement policy. The council adopt pursuant to section 198 of Local Government Regulation 2012, the procurement policy attachment nine. Have someone move the adoption of that. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Gary. Those in favour? Motion's carried. We're working through beautifully, councillors. We've got two to go. Item number 17, motion 17, which is financial sustainability strategy. And the motion is that council adopt the financial sustainability strategy '25, '26 in attachment 10. Moved by councillor Tim. Seconder? Councillor Gary. Those in favour? Motion's carried. Okay, our final motion is number 18, which is the application of code of competitive conduct to business activities of council. That pursuant to section seven of section 47 of the Local Government Act 2009 for the '25, '26 financial year, council apply the code of competitive conduct to the following business activities of council. Water and wastewater, waste services, fleet and logistics services, other roads, private works, building certification, highfields, cultural centre, cemeteries, aerodromes, laboratory services. That's the motion. So I'm going to move councillor Trevor, councillor Edwina second. Those in favour? Motion's carried. That's the last of the motions, councillors. Then we have all the attachments. Thank you. Councillors, that concludes the special meeting of council for the adoption of the budget. As I said previously, this is probably about an eight-month effort for us. For officers, it's a 12-month effort. For councillors, for the next year, '26, '27, it will be an 11th month effort. We'll have time to breathe, to reconsider the end of financial year for '24, '25 and we start the process for '26, '27. And that'll be right across the organisation with that ultimate goal of finding $14.75 million over the next 12 months across the organisation. The upshot of that is we live in a fantastic place. The belief in our community has never been stronger. The belief in councillors, your elected representatives, should be as high as it should be and better. And the belief in our operational team should remain that level as well because we live in a fantastic place. We love where we live, we love the Toowoomba region and we always take that in consideration with any decisions that are made without fear or favour, with all the information that's available at the time. Now councillors, thank you very much. That concludes the meeting.